I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Martin Lewis.
Let's bow our head for a minute, but Joe LeBlanc, very, very good citizen in Yarborough. So our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come.
Amen. Today I declare the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and all its powers.
Roll call.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalana.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Item one's called a comment. Do we have any comment cards? We do. I'll ask you at this time to put your cell phones on vibrate. And remember, we only listen. It's not a time to go back and forth. One clerk.
Richard Phillips for Agenda Item Number 5B.
Hello.
Sir.
I'm going to say things nice for a change. I feel that somebody's missing the boat a little bit. These are my notes. The New Iberia is in the very heart of Acadiana. You go 20 miles in any direction. You've got Lafayette, Broussard, Youngsville. You've got St. Martinville. You know, just go around the map. 20 miles from where we are. Sipremont Point, Avery Island, Jefferson Island. So why don't we name it the Berry Heart of Acadiana? And you can have my notes if you like. There they are. That's it.
Well, thank you. All right, moving on to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of August 17th, 2021, which will publish on Wednesday, September 8th, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Marcot. Is there any discussion about our minutes from the August 17th meeting? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Item 3A.
Persons to address the council. Ms. Cynthia Elmer with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention to address the council for Suicide Awareness Week.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Decourt and councilmembers. This is Liz Broussard. She and I are both with the Louisiana Chapter for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. September is Suicide Awareness Month, so we're just here to tell you a few things. We have chapters in all 50 states, and our mission is to prevent suicide and help those left behind. I want to tell you two success stories. We have on the back, if you'll look on the lanyards, your students, you'll have this crisis hotline number for suicide prevention. We were part of getting that. And also July 2022, you're going to be able to dial 988 for any mental health emergencies instead of 911, and you get mental health and physical health. 988 will be July next year, and that is because of some of the advocacy that AFSP has been doing. Now let Liz Broussard tell you a few things also.
We also chair the Out of the Darkness Walks in the fall. And this year, we have the Acadiana Out of the Darkness Walk, which is held every year at Youngsville Sports Complex, but it is for the Acadiana area. This year, it is November 13th, and we would invite all of you to join us. It is our fundraising event. So the money we raise at these events helps us to advocate for public policy, support survivors of suicide loss, public education, and trainings, yes. So we welcome you to join us on November 13th. And we do have sponsor forms available if anyone would care to sponsor our event. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Anybody have any questions or comments? Since you've been doing this a long time, I can't thank you enough for that. Y'all do a lot of good work. We have a proclamation. But again, I mean, I've seen you here for quite a few years, and I know the good work y'all do, and it's very appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, 4A.
Public hearing for Ordinance Number 2021-13 in ordinance creating City of New Iberia Economic Development District Number Three in accordance with and as authorized by Part Two of Chapter 27 of Title 33 of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950, as amended, defining the boundaries thereof and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
So moved by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalana and a second by Councilwoman Marcot. Is there any discussion from the public on this issue? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, 4B.
Public hearing for Ordinance 2021-14 in ordinance confirming the final form and execution of the bond purchase agreement in connection with the issuance and sale of revenue and refunding bonds in Series 2021 of the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Broussard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Marcot. Thank you. Anyone here for any public comment about this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close our public hearing. So move. Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalana and a second by Councilman Broussard. Glad you're back, Councilman Broussard. Thank you very much. Inhale.
Glad to be back.
Now we move, Madam Clerk, to item 5A.
Ordinance Number 2021-13 in ordinance creating City of New Iberia Economic Development District Number Three in accordance with and as authorized by Part Two of Chapter 27 of Title 33 of Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950, as amended, defining the boundaries thereof and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a bunch of motions. I'm sure pick somebody I hadn't picked. Councilman Swier, and I need a second.
Second.
Councilwoman Marcot. Is there any discussion on this item at all? Hearing seen none? I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. It's the first step of many to come, but a good one. Thank you. Now we go to item 5B.
Ordinance 2021-14 in ordinance confirming the final form and execution of the bond purchase agreement in connection with the issuance and sale of revenue and refunding bond Series 2021 of the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marcot. Do I have a second? Councilman Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item? Any comments? Yes, ma'am.
So the reoffering premium of 2.3 million, almost 2.4 million. Oh, sorry. I apologize. The reoffering premium. So just trying to get some explanation on the because, I mean, I thought that was about, you know, the sale once the underwriter takes it and sells it, he could sell for a premium. So just help me understand what this is about.
Right. I can give you some statistics on it. It's pretty much developed as advertised earlier to you all. The par amount of the bonds is $12,500,000. We've got a premium also above the bond par amount of almost $2.4 million. The repayment will be made over 20 years, and payments will be about $930,000 a year from 2023 through 2026. After that, the remaining payments will be $905,000 a year. You will have $12,084,000 put in your construction fund for roads. $2,775,000 will be used to pay off the refunded bonds. The interest rate, when I was here last time you asked, I said, I believe, between two and two and a half. It came in at 2.09.
Right.
So that's a great rate. A great rate. The refunding portion of the bonds replaces interest that was at 4.5 and 5.0. Replace that with 2.09.
We were paying about $600,000 on that.
And you have a savings of about $258,000.
It was why we could do this. I mean, it just made sense to roll it together.
Savings of 258,000 on that piece of the transaction. And the bond issued schedule closed September 23rd, at which time you will receive funds and start building roads. And overall, I would say this is a very successful transaction and very efficient for the city of New Iberia.
Okay. Thank you.
Comfortable?
Better.
Okay, good. Anybody else have any other questions?
Jason apologized, but he and his family had to evacuate New Orleans, so he's not here tonight for that reason.
Yeah, he called me today.
Okay.
And this is our next step. Y'all have all been meeting with the engineers, and I'm a little bit out of line. But probably at the next meeting, I'm going to ask the engineers to present. And, I mean, we're moving. You figure we'd have the money in September. That's even sooner than I thought. And then we can start advertising and go through our bid process. So, I mean, the roads are coming. Any other comments? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Thanks for coming, Dave.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, item 6A.
Resolution 21-96, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between the City of New Iberia and Coler, Slaven and Company for professional services, and authorizing the mayor to execute all contracts in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalana and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on this item? And I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. 6B.
Resolution 21-97, awarding contract to Menville Lumber Company Incorporated for the Visitors Pavilion Conversion Project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed and a second by Councilman Broussard. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, so it looks like Menville's bid is even less than what we had set aside.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you for saying that because I need a little bit of that money on the next item. I'm $12,000 off, but we're, yeah, we are definitely lower on this.
So it's like $27,000 lower. Are we going to be looking at them coming back saying we need an adjustment because they bid so low?
I don't think so. I mean, we've done work with them before. They did come back on one project because the steel went up during, because of the COVID. You know, it's always a, they can ask. But I think that the bids are close enough, and I've done enough projects with Menville that even though they left $27,000 on the table, I don't think that's going to be the case.
The only reason why I'm asking is because there's almost a $50,000 difference between their bid and the other company's bid.
Yes.
So, and then we had a bid of 200, we had a budget of 200,000.
I did, I did the budget, and it was a messy remodeling project. And it just depends on how, if people are busy or not. If they weren't busy, I knew the numbers would be a little lower. If everybody's busy, they look at a small remodeling job and kind of say, well, I got to get a premium for this. So, you know, I think we lucked out that Menville's here. So they'd like to continue to be here because they're working on the museum. So I feel like that helped us actually because they were already here. So we're going to watch them. We got professionals, and, you know, we'll see. But their work has been good on the projects they've done. So I'm excited about it. And it gave me, us, enough money to do the furnishings inside of the because we need some exhibits. You can't have a visitor's center with nothing in it. It gave us the money to do that. And hopefully, if y'all all agree, the $12,000 I need to bail out the next project, that ended up being a little bit over.
Okay.
Good.
We'll remember this conversation.
We will. Well, you know, that's the good thing about the, we will remember this conversation. It's all good.
Just messing with you.
It's okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. This job is fun. Item 6C.
Resolution 21-98, awarding contract to Beard Construction Company Incorporated for the kayak launch park project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier and a second by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter. Do we have any discussion on this item?
You want me to amend the budget now?
At some point, we're going to have to. But, you know, the good thing is we have money, and the money is in-house because that was a project that we funded ourselves, item 6B. So we will, as we needed, amend the budget for this one. It's $12,000 more, but.
So it looks like they're going to give us a match or give us more than a match to make up the difference between the bid and what we had budgeted. Is there a chance that we would need more money? And would they give us more money if we need more?
We got extra money, which is awesome. I mean, you know, for the state to say, hey, y'all do a lot of projects with us. I can give you extra was awesome. We will have to match that. But, you know, whether they have more than that, I'm not sure. You know, if they do, you know, we'll take it. But I'm not positive. But funding source has been really good to us, and this is not the first time that's happened. We've had a lot of successful projects with this agency of the state. And so they, this has happened before that they've called and said, hey, we have a little money left. That's why you plan so many projects and have them out there so that we're always ready. I never want to tell anybody no.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
For the record, ma'am, this is State Wildlife and Fisheries. What is this? What is?
No, this.
This is the State Park and Rec.
Park and Rec.
Yeah.
Parks and Rec, okay.
Tourism.
Tourism.
Yeah, tourism. It's a.
Tourism.
It's tourist dollars.
But there are some dollars that came to the kayak from Wildlife and Fisheries.
Yeah, on the marinas.
On the marinas.
And we're actually applying for some other money that will be through Wildlife and Fisheries later in the agenda. We're trying to double our, double down and use state money to match it federal.
Okay.
But you're right. We do get funding from them, too.
Yeah, because people always say, y'all got grants, so where the money at for my street office?
I know, I know. Well, Wildlife and Fisheries does the streets.
I think they should know where this money comes from every chance we get.
That's a good point. Anybody else?
Over here. Is this the boat launch on Fulton?
This is the, no, ma'am, this is the kayak dock.
Oh, okay. Where is that at?
At the foot of the DePerry Street Bridge.
Got it, okay. Yeah. Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Anybody else? Then I'd ask, please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, 6D.
Resolution 21-99, endorsing the application of Kane River Pecan Company for the Restoration Tax Abatement Program.
So move. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Protim's on the ball. And the second was Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item? Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
I guess the, when I look at what they're actually going to improve, it doesn't appear that it's something that would increase jobs because they're talking about corporate office and cafeteria and kitchen, not adding, something that's adding more jobs.
Well, somebody has to work in the cafeteria and the kitchen. And then I look at the total investment because we're rarely going to not say someone endorse them getting these tax. When it's in the National Historic District, when he spent, I don't remember how much, buying the building. He's already spent a million dollars on his first set of renovations. Now he's renovating again. So it, I mean, to me, you have to, if you have these programs, you need to use them. So I like the fact that we would be supporting that. I can't say it wouldn't add any jobs because once he has, it's a pie bar. It's a, kind of like a little restaurant. It's got a kitchen. I mean, somebody's got to make all that. His offices will be housed there, too. I do, I do know that. I don't know. I mean, it's, when someone wants to take advantage of this and they making investments, I want, I want to try to give it to anybody. I mean, you know, anywhere it fits that it's open to do that, I push them to take advantage of, to take the truth because it makes that investment. Yeah, I'm going around the table. Dustin, you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
In defense of Kane River, I actually seen, my family business used to be next door to where they do the actual peeling. And they hire annually to do a lot of that work. So I know they do hire quite a bit of employees to come to the area to work. So I just wanted to just point that out.
Okay, cool. Mayor Protim.
I think, I think, I think where, where sometimes we get confused as an elected body is the ITEP program, which is, you have to meet requirements on job criteria to get the tax rebate. And we've done several of those parish ward when I was on the council. But on the restoration tax abatement, it's more of a tourism guided issue and more of a bringing taxpayers to your community to generate sales tax and revenue. That's where your return really comes into play. So I think, I think it's a great opportunity for any business to try to get. And I think this council needs to be proactive and supporting those kind of things.
I wish we were doing one every week. I mean, you know, because we have investment.
And don't, I'm just questioning because I'm, I'm looking at, okay, are these investments that we're making actually going to?
Right.
Because we have high unemployment rate, so how does that convert to jobs? So that's my, that's my motivation behind asking these questions. I want to understand, are we going to get some benefit as far as people hiring and taxes being paid through that way?
I understand. And I think we are. I think we do get some. You know, is it, is it like we've got a factory here? No. I mean, I wish we would. That's, that's the big thing on everybody's mind that I wish we could pull off is something that brought three, 400, 500 jobs.
Right.
I haven't found that animal yet, so I'm pecking at it. One little piece, we are pecking at it one little piece at a time. But you are right because jobs are the only opportunity to change this place.
Right.
Jobs and then the taxes that those jobs bring in. And we all know a dollar turns over seven times in a community. So if you're working, you got money.
Exactly.
I mean, we're on the same page. We just.
And I'm, I'm not saying I'm not supporting. I'm just questioning, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah. And some are taught to. You're right. We haven't done one here yet that it was taught to jobs. But hopefully, we get that problem ahead.
Yeah.
Mr. Broussard.
Driving a little bit through some of these towns, Abbeville, Jennings, they all have these big, I mean, Generec, big white elephants that aren't being built or touch base or doing something with. It's fabulous that a company come off the side streets and open this big old thing in that building for us. You know, and I call it for us because it's a national outfit. They ship things all over the world. And I think it's a good for Yarborough. We have too many elephants already. I'm sure glad that they filled up this one, you know? So I hope we can fill up some more, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say that when they first started off, they were definitely in my district. And they still, you know, use that, that building that they have there. And they expanded to Main Street, which I thought was a good expansion. And of course, it did, at that point, you know, add some jobs to it. And I'm sure that since they're remodeling and doing all this that there may be another expansion coming in the near future. So I just want to say that I'm behind them 100%. And I want them to do well and continue to, to stay here in New Iberia.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just, I'm glad, I'm glad Ricky cleared it up. Being on the pair, it seemed like y'all might have did more industry-based tax abatement incentives. So this one is just for a tourism incentive. I mean, actually, an incentive to get people to do business in our community.
That's basically what it is.
Yeah, so, so no, thank you. And all of the questions were good. But thank you for cleaning it up for me. Got it.
All right. Well, there's nothing further? Please vote your machines. Thank you all. 7A.
Resolution 21-100, authorizing the City of New Iberia to prepare and submit an application to the Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries for assistance in the implementation of the construction of Felicity's Landing through the Sport Fish Restoration Program, providing for necessary documentation or the need for construction and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Councilman Lewis and a, who was the second?
Me.
Okay. Councilwoman Ledbetter, thank you. And this is one where I said earlier, we already got state funding of $386,000 to construct Felicity's Landing. Now we're taking the state dollars and taking an attempt to write this grant and match them with federal dollars. So that would be our 20% match. So our take would really go up. dollars. So that would be our 20% match, so our take would really go up. Uh, we were successful many years ago doing this in St. Martinville a couple of times. Uh, it's not anything new, and we all know that state and federal can match each other. So Jane and Paul and I all and David kind of put something together and, uh, nothing lost unless you try, you know? So any questions or comments?
Oh, man, I'm gonna just comment. This is, uh, the Felicity thing gonna be nice, right?
I think so.
I, I think all that we've been doing, uh, for Bayou Test, I think it's gonna be nice, you know? And all I say is, I encourage, uh, every, every segment of our community to use it, you know? Don't complain about who it's for, who it ain't for. I mean, if you got a boat, enjoy, enjoy Bayou Test, man, you know? It's a good way to diversify our community even further.
Yep.
But we gotta utilize it.
Yep. And we get to tell a little history about Felicity.
I'm proud of it.
And tie that in, which I think is really neat, that the Puria House was right across the bay from there. Uh, it just kind of starts tying things together. It's also gonna give us an opportunity, and I've had more than one person who was interested in a tour boat, nothing huge, but a small one, and this will be a landing that gets you down to the bay. It gets bodies, you know, down some stairs. So, uh, I think it's gonna be interesting, and if we could quadruple our money, uh, who wouldn't want to try that? Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, seven B.
Resolution 21 dash 101, a resolution in support of grand application to the Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries through the Sportfish Restoration Program for assistance in the implementation of construction of boat slips for transient motorboats, a boating access project for Civic Center Circle West.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Swear and a second by Mayor Platoon Ricky. Counselor, any discussion on this one? Then I would ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all very much. All right. Eight A.
Kevin Zaring to present monthly budget reports for November 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, and November 1st, 2020 through July 31st, 2021.
Well, uh, where's Mr. Zaring?
She didn't get the email. Well, since you got a minute, I'm sure glad to be back.
Keep talking, Mr. Bruceford.
COVID in your lungs, three weeks down. It's bad. So I appreciate y'all dealing with me for a little while.
This is called a filibuster.
Glad to chat.
Hey, you, you coming? Okay. All right. Bye. Mrs. Zaring is on the way. He took the opportunity to continue working. I don't know where he was, but he's on the way. He's in the building.
Home in out there. It is? Home in. You're right. We got more time now. Rather be in here.
I'm gonna put my pants on.
Excuse me. The people in the audience supposed to?
What's your relief, Mr. Mayor?
The ones over here earlier.
Who was he in?
Tippodoo in Homer.
Yeah, talk to him about that.
I'm asking questions.
Oh, yeah.
They got gas down the roof. We got him this time.
Y'all actually excited to see me?
Wait 10 minutes for you.
That's only this week. When we get the budgets, we may not be that happy.
I'm sorry. You've been good.
All righty. So we're doing June and July's. Do we want to go through June, or y'all just want to ask questions and then I'll go over July?
Go over July.
Any questions on June?
Want to hit the highlights?
Hit the highlights.
Yeah, hit the highlights. I don't, I don't like to go that fast.
All right. Highlights, uh, we are on general fund. We're doing better than where we should be. Parks, public works, they're higher on their revenue because of the way we recognize the ad valorem tax. Sales tax is where it should be. Garbage fund, uh, revenue is lower because of the way we've been treating our rebate expenses. Uh, it's because we had a, um, when we renegotiated, um, Garten Doyle's contract, we were able to get a better rate. Section eight is where they should be. They're actually higher on their revenue, and they're doing good on their expenses. And wastewater, the revenue, they're doing better than budget, and their expenses are where they should be.
Good.
That summary enough.
Can I get a quick question about parks and rec? It looks like their expenditures are fairly low. Is there any reason why we're not?
Their expenses are lost because they have capital and capital outlay. They haven't spent yet.
Okay.
And I didn't adjust their numbers for.
Okay.
Okay. Y'all ready to move forward to July?
Yes, sir.
Okay. July, we should be at 75%. So general fund, we're at 71.48 on revenue and 71.42 on the expenses. So we're better than, um, a little low on the revenue, but we're where we should be on the expenses. Parks, public works, the same thing with their revenue. Uh, should zero, it should even out. Towards the end of the year, I also have to make an adjustment. We, I go back and reallocate ad valorem, bring it to the actuals. Uh, parks and public works are low on their expenses because they have capital outlay they hadn't spent. Sales tax fine, we're higher on our revenue, and our outlay is about where it should be. If you round it, it's 75%. Garbage fund, revenue is at 66%, expenses are 61, same explanation as June. Section eight, their revenue is actually higher than where they were budgeted, which is really good, and their expenses are lower than what we had expected. Wastewater, revenue is higher than what we had budgeted at 88%, and their expenses are at 71%, which is lower than what they were budgeted. Is that quick enough for y'all?
Any questions?
I have a question for you.
Okay.
So the capital outlays, are, do we think that's gonna happen in this fiscal year? Or?
You talking about like the parks?
Yeah, because it's September.
Yes. Uh, Heather and I have been meeting on that, and I have been urging Kevin and Lloyd to spend that money and speed up. We've also been in talks about next budget. We have a ton of projects coming. We all know that. And they have assured me that they held back some this year because they didn't know about COVID. They didn't know where it would be. So there was some caution at the first part of the budget. I appreciate the caution, but where we are, we're not a bank. We're supposed to be giving services. We're supposed to be doing stuff.
Right.
So we've had many conversations, uh, some last week at budget, or this week, whenever we had our budget, I mean, last week.
Last week.
Talked about that definitely when November 1 comes, with the amount of projects we have coming, with the amount of American Rescue Plan money, with everything that's out there, we're gonna hit on the gas right from the beginning. Because I think we can, we're not rich, but we can afford to, because this money's dedicated to projects. We need to move on.
Okay.
Uh, we have one or two big things that we didn't spend money on. Uh, one was an air conditioning system, and I'm looking at revamping the way we are doing it. Um, it, for whatever reason, we didn't get a lot of competitive bids. I'm now thinking that when the roof bids come back, remember there's some money to do some interior renovations? I'm kind of thinking about taking the money for the air conditioning, combining it with the, uh, money from the roof that we save to do a bigger project, rolled it all in, and then let the general contractors get us some real competition. Because sometimes when you bid one item out, I've been a contractor my whole life, you get prices, you, you even could always wonder that, you know, it, why so many people aren't interested in it. When you get a GC on a job and he wants the job, he's gonna go, if he's got to shop that air conditioning from here to wherever, to get the best price.
Okay.
So I am thinking, and that was a big chunk. So I think that money we'll probably hold off on, and I, when I realize, well, why not combine it with a, a larger project?
Okay.
Uh, but I do plan on, and we've had some discussions about that, of, of picking up the pace.
Okay.
You know, you know, in a positive way, just like I said, the caution was there, and I appreciate it, but I think, I think we need to roll.
Yeah. Great.
One question.
Sure.
So I think we had this discussion prior, I mean, but since we approved the 12 and a half million dollar bond for roads, are we gonna see an additional line item on the budget where the, the bond issue for roads will appear as we using it, or?
Yeah, we'll have a, we'll have a, a line item just for the road.
Actually, what we're thinking is we'll have a, it'll be a separate line, but it'll be a separate fund, as well as the money we're getting.
So we'll build a?
You'll be able to track the progress.
Yes.
And I know that's what you're looking for, and yes, you will be able to track the progress. Actually, we've been talking about many of our projects, we're gonna put them all separately so that we can track. I, I had promised that, and I'm excited to do it. Soon as we get rolling, I'll give like a quarterly report on all the projects and where we are. But I think they each need their own budget, their own line items, so that we can all track the progress. That way, if there's a question, you can say, hey, this one's been stuck in, this one didn't start yet, or this one's been stuck at 20% for four months. What's going on, you know?
Right.
No, that helps communicate the message.
It does. No, it does. And it also lets us tell our people, and that's what we up here for. We're not trying to grade people's papers, but we, people have to know, and I do realize that, people that we all represent have to know, you know, where the money's gone and what's happening.
Right.
Because it is frustrating, but it's part of government. We talk about things sometimes for a year before they happen. I mean, you know, we've been talking about the road bond, but we had to get our finances straight. That's one we talked about for two years last term, and all of this year we've been together, you know? So that's a three-year talk that people are like at the same damn pothole. So I do realize that, you know, that's the procedure that government works, but when we finally start to go, we, we do need to talk about it.
When they start seeing that, we're gonna have a lot of it.
All right. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Um, it's? Mr. Bruceford, I appreciate you supporting me, and I got your back.
Thank you. All right. Councilman's remarks, I'll start on Dustin's end tonight.
All right. Uh, basically tonight, I want to, you know, send my prayers out to the, the towns out on the east that, that what they're going through. We, luckily, we missed it, but not for them. Um, I do have some extended family out in the Grand Isle, town of Grand Isle, which were typically wiped off the map. Uh, we're actually gonna be doing, we actually started a drive, a donation drive for them. Um, the drop-off location for them is gonna be 609 South Lewis Street, which is across from the shopping center where Pizza Hut is and the five-minute, uh, I think it's five or 10-minute oil change. So any water, supplies, hygiene items, anything they can get their hands on, their, their, you know, their, their need. Um, we'll also be heading that way next week, hopefully once they open the road back up, to get over there and cook a meal to serve about 300 or 400 people. So if anyone's looking to donate, uh, they can contact me. Uh, my number's 337-523-6239. And like I said, hopefully next week, we go out there and cook a meal for about 300 to 400 people. They actually reached out to me, because some of these people are on the city council, the town council, far with the city of Grand Isle, which is some extended family. So I thought we can maybe help out in some kind of way, uh, since they have some ties to this community as well. So, and that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to kind of echo Dustin's sentiments about the, um, the hurricane and all the people. There's a lot of people in New Iberia, um, a lot of people from Homer, Thibodeau. And, um, I've been kind of working with New Chapter Push. They're actually also putting together a drive to collect items to take over to Thibodeau to kind of help some of the people out. Um, there's some groups here that have been feeding people at the hotels. I encourage everybody who's here to apply to FEMA to get help, because FEMA is now issuing, um, some of the certificates so that you can actually have your hotel room paid for. Uh, because it's, I mean, we have everywhere, there are people everywhere. And so if you're sleeping in your cars, you could at least get a hotel room now. FEMA's already kind of authorized all of that. Um, then the other thing is, I want to remind everybody, and this is even more important because there's so many people in New Iberia, that COVID is still out there and it's going strong. Um, I lost a cousin yesterday to COVID, and, um, he's like, I don't know, 53. And that's like the fourth person in my area, right around my house, that have died from COVID. And so I encourage people to remember that if you're not vaccinated, try to stay home, wear your mask. There's so many people that don't wear their mask. Please wear your mask, because you could lose your life, or you could cause somebody else to lose theirs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I want to tell the people in my district, specifically in Caroline Street, Bayard Street, Evanderland Street area, that, um, the Caroline Street crossing is on the slate to be closed. And we have 30 days to turn in comments, and this started on August the 26th. So we pretty much have most of this month to collect the comments. So, uh, please send your comments in. If you, you know, you don't want it closed, or whatever you have to say, please send in the comments. And, um, they can, you can send them to me and my email address, or you can send them to our mayor here, you know, at the city hall. Um, I think the mayor and I may plan to have a town hall, you know, uh, to get more comments in the very near future, within this, these 30 days. So.
We have to have a public comment, period. We have to have a public hearing. So before we leave tonight, it was kind of informal, but I, when I got to my comments, we need to pick a date.
Oh, okay.
And I would like to do that so that Aaron can get it publicized.
Okay.
We definitely will. We'll probably use this line, and it's a good kind of central location. And, uh, I, I would like to, to, you know, schedule that tonight.
Okay, okay. Sounds, sounds good. So, uh, people who are living in that area, especially the nursing home and the rehab center that's down there, um, is gonna cause an inconvenience to you if, and when it closes, if or when it closes. And, um, we need all your input. Now is the time to do it. Yes, you did it before, but it's a must that you do it again right now. So we'll, uh, let you know before the end of this month when the, uh, the meeting will be for a public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ricky?
My turn. So just, um, you know, I echoed some of the sentiments that my colleagues said about the hard times in the east, and also as well as the, the good things that we're accomplishing, you'll be seeing roads and, uh, a new sports complex on the horizon. But we always got to remember about our neighbors and the hard times and being prepared for storms. Uh, so that, you know, those prayers are answered. Also, just to reassure the public that, uh, there is no fuel shortage. Stay calm. Got plenty of fuel. Little shortage on truck drivers right now, and that's the problem. But there is fuel coming, and, uh, no need to panic. And, uh, you just stay calm. That was one thing I was getting calls about. Another thing I'm getting calls about is electric bills, and unfortunately, you know, we have no part in that. And, uh, so, you know, everybody got their letter from, from Clico, and I have been getting mostly calls about that. But, uh, hopefully, you know, those things subside in the near future. But on another note, um, we do have Constitutional Week, um, that's gonna be recognized on September 17th through the 23rd of 2021. It's a great time to learn more about the important document that celebrates our freedom of America. And this aims to celebrations or emphasize citizens, citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution, informing people that the Constitution is the basic of America's great heritage and the foundation of our way of life. So this Constitution was signed into public law August 2nd, 1956 by President Eisenhower. So it's a great opportunity if you serve in public office, and not only serve in public office, but you have time to review it. It's an important document that, uh, we should all be aware of from our founding fathers. That'll be it.
Thank you. Mr. Bruceford? Hey, we're talking about the railroad?
We're gonna get to it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, want to formally, again, uh, my condolences to Joe LeBlanc family. He was a real supporter to a lot of things in New Iberia. So again, we can't say enough, but, uh, just remember Joe LeBlanc. Roads, Mr. Mayor. I was very excited when I come to that meeting. Y'all have a bunch of roads in my district. I think a lot of us have a lot of roads. I think the people are gonna be amazed to see how much we doing with, I never dreamed we'd get this far. Because, man, we, we're seeing nothing for a long time. Uh, the railroad crossings.
Yes, sir.
We, we, as a council, we said several times, and we saying it again, we don't want to close any of them. I want to be loud and clear with the public. We don't want to close any of them. They have a lady that just died, I think, at the Caroline, the first house. I forgot her name. She died this week.
Ms. Annabelle.
Oh, man, she's a, oh, she's a big on that a lot. But in a big way, remind the people that, yeah, come to these, because we have to convince the state, not us. We don't want to close any of them. But we have to get with the state to satisfy them, to get the other six locations, which you have orange flags around for the orange boxes, the arms and lights boxes. The main thing is, we have to get those other six locations up. Iberia Weeks, Julia, French, up, so they all be done. Evanderland on the other end, Deers done, Caroline's, Corinne's done, and Bank is done right now. We never had arms at those locations. We have it now. But it's $200,000 the state has to pay to put up each arm and light. So that's why they want to close some, because they think we have too many. But let the state come down and tell us which ones they go close. I think, you didn't send a letter yet, huh, Mr. Mayor?
What's that?
To the state, that we, the state that we don't want to commit to closing any of them, but y'all want to.
I have sent many letters.
I know. But, you know. Whatever it does, keep it going forward.
We'd send it with the notes with the public hearing.
Let's keep it going forward. And please, citizens, we fight for y'all not to close any. But y'all have to convince the state not to close them.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot. Just want to ditto everything that was said about our friends to the east. Uh, thank God for sparing us, but you know, we got to support our friends. I mean, we, it just missed us. Everybody know that. Uh, I met the mayor of Grand Isle, uh, is it David Comedy, Comedy? And isn't his wife from New Iberia?
Paula.
Yeah, and I met him at the LMA convention, man. They were nice, man. They treated me nice.
She's from St. Martin.
You know, it's just, I didn't realize Grand Isle had such a connection to New Iberia. But also Homer as well. There's a lot of people here from Homer that lives here. My pastor's from Homer. A couple of our church members are from Homer. But it just, man, we just, uh, well, all I could say is that, uh, I, I want to support every initiative that is out there right now, the one with Push. Uh, I could do anything to help you all. And y'all know my number, but the public, if anything I can do is, my number's 337-577-3448. Uh, and definitely got, you know, the people to the east in my prayers. Uh, my dad is living with me. He's in New, he's, my dad lives in New Orleans, so he came down. It was out of power. Just a lot of, it, it, this storm, you know, it's funny, we was like, we, we missed it, but really, we didn't miss it. Because the gas, that's a inconvenience. The traffic is an inconvenience, but just thank God that we able to help and, you know, be there for them. So, uh, that's all I have tonight. Oh, and the neighborhood cleanup. Oh, oh.
Oh, yes.
Because it's like a month from now. We, we, we have a, uh, neighborhood cleanup scheduled. We didn't get all of the, uh, particulars nailed down yet, but we have a date, October the 2nd.
That's correct.
Uh, from 9:00 to 12:00, and we're gonna be, it's gonna be a, a partnership, District 2 and District 5, where, uh, going along the Hopkins Street corridor. And, uh, me and Councilwoman Reed is gonna partner and spearhead that together and get as much as we can get done.
We're also gonna work with Parish Proud.
Yes, definitely. Good, good. Thank you.
That's it.
Brooke?
Okay. I would like to also send my condolences to LeBlanc family. Uh, Mr. Joe LeBlanc lived down the street from me. Very, very sweet man. Uh, he's just done so many charitable things for our community. So we truly lost a public servant with his passing. Um, also, if anyone wants to donate bottled water, my son's baseball team is collecting bottled water for those that were affected by Hurricane Ida. So I will gladly take that if you want. And, um, I think that's it. Yep.
But your drainage meeting.
What's that?
Your drainage meeting.
You want me to talk about the drainage meeting? So I met with the residents of Summerfield about their drainage issues. And, um, it looks like I have a lot of work to do with the parish to try to get some things settled. Um, so this is the start of it. You know, I went and I visited. I heard all of their issues. Uh, I got Mr. Pat Viatour involved as well, and he's really knowledgeable about those things. So, uh, Mr. Ricky knows about it as well. So I'm, uh, trying my best to get some stuff done for them so they stop flooding.
Good.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, my condolences to LeBlanc family as well. And then we had another loss. Uh, Ricky Delahoussaye was a classmate of mine of the little Brooklyn, was very involved with all the Brooklyn project. Uh, so I, I just want to send my condolences to the Delahoussaye family. Uh, Ricky and I go way back. It, I knew Ricky forever. Uh, other than that, we, uh, do need to set our public hearing for the railroad. I was looking at Wednesday, the 22nd, or Thursday, the 23rd. That would give Aaron time to put out the announcement. Uh, so I was kind of thinking, kind of in the evening, four or five o'clock. Would like some feedback? Five o'clock?
A budget meeting?
No, this would be the, uh, railroad public hearing we have to have about the.
I think you do it on a Thursday. Parish Council got a meeting that night.
I think you do it on a Thursday, Parish Council got a meeting that night. Like, uh, some Parish Council...
Do it on Thursday, okay. So is everybody pretty cool that I would, we would set it Thursday, the 23rd?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, about 6:00.
Six even.
You know, this is, people work.
Get some people out.
Okay, let's do it at 6:00 then. That way, Aaron, I want, you know, I don't normally do this at a public meeting, but that way we can get the notices out and, uh, get that moving. That's Lyman, I was thinking.
Lyman?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of centrally located, and we can control that space, so. So I asked Heather to put it down Thursday, the 23rd. 6:00 is available, good, see, to handle all our business. All done. Uh, other than that, we have properties for sale on civicsource.com. Uh, please look at the Storm Water Participation Survey that's out there on our website. And our next council meeting is September 21st, it's gonna be a long one. Uh, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you.